Welcome to the Town of Smithfield Planning Board Meeting for December tenth, two thousand twenty-five. Before we begin, I'd like to announce the emergency evacuation and health notification. In case of emergency, there are two main exits located in the rear of the auditorium. Exit to the left and follow the exit signs. The facilities are located to the right and left of the rear exit doors. Please do not exit through the courtyard in the event of an emergency. Continuation of new business, the collection at Lime Rock Acres, public hearing, major land development, master plan comprehensive. Do we have a motion?
We do, Mr. Chairman. Michael Resnick, on behalf of the applicant, I apologize for being late. I was in South County and the traffic was more than I expected. Our motion is to continue this matter to January seventh. I've discussed with your counsel an appropriate extension for the planning board relative to that. And if I might ask, Mr. Solicitor, what was the date that we had agreed upon?
So if the seventh was the date, I believe you're going to give thirty days from the date of the actual hearing.
I also would like to give a courtesy to the board. I don't know when the regularly scheduled meeting is in February. We'd like to keep it to thirty days or approximate. But if the board would like to bring it to that next February date as opposed to a straight thirty days, we'd be happy to do that.
In terms of the clock?
Exactly. I just don't know when that date is. But I spoke to my team and my team is fine with January seventh for the continuation date, if that's good for the members of the board.
Okay, and could you briefly give us an idea for the reasons for the request for the continuation?
Absolutely. So as you know, there was a peer review ordered of the traffic materials that were presented by par. Obviously, quite a bit of materials to go through. I'm not suggesting that Crossman did not act diligently or staff didn't act diligently in getting the peer review to them. But my team had a fairly short period of time, probably less than a week, to respond to that. And normally, the way we like to deal with peer reviews is to have the experts talk so that we can come back to the board with some consensus as opposed to an argument. So that's the first reason, we need a little bit more time. And then unfortunately, our primary engineer, Mr. Chevlin, is away in Europe. And also, his associate, Mr. Herman, that presented last time, is also unavailable. So we have no traffic expert. To be candid with you, even if we had a traffic expert, I don't think there's appropriate time for Crossman, your peer reviewer, and our engineer to work out these issues to appropriately address the board. So I think it makes a lot of sense. I don't think there's any prejudice to the town, given the fact that we are maintaining the same extension period. And depending on how the next meeting goes, where we're primarily going to be looking at traffic and the airport issues, we can certainly discuss whether an additional meeting would be required. We'd prefer to take it step by step and address that at the next meeting. But those are the reasons. We're not equipped with an expert in the peer review time period.
Is it my understanding, I know you have an aviation expert that was disclosed and a report was forwarded to the board. So we have that testimony?
It's our intent that we would be presenting materials on traffic as well as the airport issues. I can tell you that there's also a piece of the airport issue that, it's something that I've papered. It's some correspondences that I've sent to the town. There is a legal presentation that I would like to make at that hearing that is separate and apart from expert testimony based off of safety issues. But yes, that is the intent. And if there's necessity for cleanup or follow-up, we can certainly discuss another date.
There's no intent for additional experts beyond what's been disclosed to the board, that's my point. As a reason for the request, is that correct?
No, absolutely no additional experts. And if there was an additional expert presented, and the town would certainly have the opportunity to look at whether they wanted to peer review it, it would be a whole other discussion about extensions and continuances.
Now, we have a lot of the member of the public here today that were most likely not aware that there was going to be a request for a continuance and planned on there being a hearing. We did have the opportunity, the last hearing, for some of the public to speak, a public hearing. Would you be opposed to allow whoever's here today that was not here previously and not sure whether or not they'll be here for the next hearing, have the ability to comment today?
I would have absolutely no opposition. The only thing I would say, Mr. Chairman, is without my team and without my experts, and as you know, I have been ordering transcripts. So what I will do is, when we, any comments from the community, we will order the transcript. I will discuss it with my experts. So I don't want anybody to think if I'm not voraciously taking notes that we're not going to cover it. I'm just not going to respond without my team.
Well, that was the point, give you the opportunity to respond at the next hearing if you thought it needed to be responded.
I have no objection. Everyone's here, it was noticed. I appreciate the board's indulgence relative to this issue and absolutely prepared to listen to any comments from the public.
I'm going to open it up for the board members if they have any questions on the request for a continuance.
Counsel, February nineteenth is the planning board date in February. I don't know if we answered that question.
Well, my suggestion to the board was, we're talking about a several-week period here. And if it would benefit the board to bring that extension to their next meeting as opposed to issuing a decision prior there too, we're happy to do that. Two weeks for collegiality and with respect to the process is not a problem.
Okay, what we're going to do is, we're going to open it up for the public to speak with your agreement. Is that correct?
Absolutely.
Okay, and then we'll vote on the motion after the public has had an opportunity to speak, to the extent they wish to do so. With respect to the members of the public, anyone who has not had the opportunity to speak at the last hearing or are here today and would like to speak, being uncertain whether they can be here for the next hearing, you're more than welcome to come. I ask that, make an orderly line coming up. We have a microphone right in front of me. When you come up, please state your name, your address, and I'll swear you in. At this point, I'm going to open it up for public comment.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Peter Parsicki and I live at eighteen Cross Street in Smithfield, extension of Fernwood.
Yeah, can I swear you in?
Pardon me?
I need to swear you in.
Okay.
You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do. This thing is a little... P A R S E K I A N. Oh, did you get it? Okay. When I was at the last meeting, it was not addressed, one issue was not addressed and maybe it was planned to be addressed at a later meeting, was the road congestion. Even now with additional development, these roads are crowded during many days of the week, almost at any time. No one honors the twenty... Oh, sure. No one honors the twenty mile per hour speed limit signs. But these roads are congested almost any time of the week. And an additional development would just make it that much more congested. No one's, it seems, takes Route two ninety-five to get to the shops on Putnam Pike. They take the back roads for whatever reason. We moved here for a country setting to avoid the kind of traffic found in more congested areas like East Providence, Rhode Island. This development would greatly add to the congestion, there'd be no way to avoid it. I can only see more near accidents and speeding and disruption on the road. A lot of the houses are somewhat close to the road in this area. And it seems like there's only two options for drivers coming from the Lime Rock development. One would be to take two ninety-five, and like I said, that doesn't seem to be one that they've chosen frequently. And the other is to take the back roads past my place and the houses developed along that road. So I mean, it just seems like adding congestion destroys the country setting of the town. And I just, you know, I'm totally opposed to it, my position.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I'm not going to testify, only have a request to make, if possible. Number one, that...
Can we get your name?
Oh, John Brigette, Stillwater Road.
You swear to the request?
I still got to swear you in. You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do. B R E G U E T. I'm only requesting that if the developer intends on submitting new documents prior to the hearing on whatever, February nineteenth, if that's going to be the date, that those documents be made available to the general public at least seven days in advance. Secondly, I would suggest, as a courtesy to the people who already come twice, if they come to a third time, that this matter be the first on the calendar so that sometimes these meetings and other things go quite some distance, that's all.
Thank you. Anyone else from the member of the public that would like to be heard this evening? Please come forward.
Christine Sarway. C H R I S T I N E. S A T T E R W H I T.
Let me swear you in, please. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do. And first of all, I would like to meet the chairman of the planning committee. Is he here today?
Right, you're speaking to him.
Is that you?
Yeah.
Okay, and you might recognize my name because I've sent you several emails. Okay. I've only lived in Smithfield for five years and was very excited to move here because I thought that Smithfield was going in the direction that I expected. I'm very, I have been, I'm sorry, but I have been very disappointed because I feel like density development is really not the way that Smithfield wants to go. I really think that, you know, we want to maintain what has been established in the past by the wonderful people that have been in control of the city. And I think there are so many reasons to really think twice about this. You know, you think that, well, gee, you know, we're going to have this development and we're going to get higher tax rates, you know, and that's going to help our community. But does it really? I mean, because you get to the point where you have more expenses. You know, you have to take care of your children in school. And what happens there? You know, and you have to establish infrastructure, you know, firemen and policemen. And, you know, so is it really a good situation? Is it really a win-win for everybody? I'm not sure it is. And essentially, the most thing, I think, that is most important of people that have lived here longer than me is the quality of life. The most wonderful thing about Smithfield is the level of quality of life that we have now. And so why should we destroy that? Why should we, you know, allow situations to happen that maybe we don't realize it now, but in the future for our children? We need to think twice about these things. And we shouldn't let, I don't know, avarice and other things to stop us from, you know, having a wonderful place. So, and I'm worried about, as the previous man said, you know, that is a narrow road that I take frequently and I'm worried about accidents. You know, I hear the poor policemen go almost every day because of some issue. And I really don't want that to have to increase. So I am against this. I really think we should rethink it and really think about what we want for the town of Smithfield. I mean, I'm assuming that you all live there and you don't want anything that is going to make your life worse than it is now. And so I just want you to know, please think about this, you know. And thank you for listening to me.
Thank you.
Yes, I get to hold it. Good evening. S. James Busham, two Karen Anne Drive, Smithfield. B U S A M.
Can I swear you in?
What's that?
Can I swear you in?
Oh, sure.
You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I absolutely do.
Go ahead, sir.
Thank you. I don't know, coming tonight, after a published schedule for this meeting and all these people, and now the developer wants to extend again and again. I mean, this could be a ploy. Let's just keep dragging it out until more people can't come. So, you know, I...
For the members of the public, I know you have an interest in this. But it's important that we have some decorum for both the applicant, just like the applicant should have decorum for the members of the public with their presentations. So try to keep applause and comments to a minimum, please. Go ahead, sir.
Well, it's just disrespectful to the public when the developer can come at the last minute and ask for an extension. That's not right. And they have all their consultants, they have all their legal teams, they have all these people that they want to drag in here to refute what the citizens of this town really want. And they get all the consideration and the citizens didn't. So I think it's a shame that we all have to put up with another month or another two months. And I hope you take into consideration the fact that they didn't treat the public very well tonight. And lastly, hopefully, at the next meetings, when they have all their consultants, we can challenge some of those consultants with some of their information. I don't want to challenge them tonight. I want them to be able to answer the questions. I don't want him just to take away documents and create arguments. So hopefully, we'll get to do this. Now, is the next meeting scheduled in January or February?
We don't have a date yet. We're targeting January seventh, but it's not certain.
What makes it certain?
Every, the facility here has to be available, the members of the...
And you did all that. You did all the accommodations for them and they just blew us off.
Well, in fairness, they did receive the peer review material shortly before the hearing. So they need an opportunity to address that. So it's not a ridiculous request.
Okay, thank you.
Any other members of the public, please come forward.
My name is John Van Luling. That's spelled V A N space L U L I N G. I live on seventeen Karen Anne Drive here in Smithfield.
Can I swear you in?
You can.
Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Absolutely.
Go ahead, sir.
Okay, let's say I live on seventeen Karen Anne Drive. And if any of you are familiar with Karen Anne, which at this point, I'm sure hope all of you have driven Lime Rock, Karen Anne, Maureen. You know the neighborhood, you know where the developer's looking to take the intersections into the new development off of Lime Rock Road. Karen Anne will become a shortcut, that's my concern. When the congestion starts to fill up at Douglas Pike and Lime Rock Road, and there's been studies and people who live here in town have told us time and time again, there's a huge backup there, not only during the commute hours, but also during the course of the day. And my concern is that with the light traffic backing up down at that intersection, the shortcut will be Karen Anne Drive coming out of the new development over to where Douglas Lumber used to be. It goes from Karen Anne to Maureen Drive. I've already got a lot of traffic coming through. I lived, I built in seventy-nine, so I've lived here for, what is the number, forty-five years. The traffic has increased tremendously because the planning board, years past, has approved a complete development off of Clark Road, where Clark Road was a dead end after about two or three houses, if any of you have been around long enough to know that. And then you developed this whole development up there, which is West Farm Road, most recently, Canton Court, off of Josephine Drive, that whole development up in there. There are about sixty-some-odd homes up there. The traffic coming through the intersection of Clark and Karen Anne, there's not even a four-way sign there, there's just two that come through, but everybody blows right through these intersections. You hear the horn blowing all the time. And so I'm looking at this and saying, well, can't change that. But we certainly, it's sort of a model for what's going to happen when you build a hundred homes across from Karen Anne Drive and the traffic will just continue to increase. And nobody pays attention to the speed limits. There are teenagers now coming through and you know teenagers fly. And so I'm just trying to make you aware that, again, traffic studies galore on Lime Rock, that the neighborhoods are going to suffer for this. Thank you.
Thank you.
I spoke once, can I speak again?
Yes, you can.
Right, thank you. It's Matthew Fage, F A G U E, two forty-seven Old County Road.
Can I swear you in? Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do, sir.
Just for one second. I think there's some members of the public that are talking while the presenters are presenting. Please try not to do that. We can hear it's getting a little bit distracting, so just try to keep that to a minimum. Go ahead.
First off, I truly appreciate you allowing some of the public to speak tonight. I was caught off guard, I didn't know it was going to be continued tonight, usually I'm on top of things. I think there would be more people here. I think some people may have got wind that it was continued. I appreciate the opportunity, the council allowing people to talk tonight. Probably like a day or two after the last meeting, I was out doing my fall cleanup in the yard and it was just jet after jet after jet that was coming in that was utilizing the airport. I checked my FlightAware app. All these jets are coming in from Key Tabor airports, points south, points out of Florida, and they're using the airport. So we're talking about the public safety, I don't know what he's going to present for an expert. Whatever expert he was going to present tonight, he must have had knowledge that he wasn't going to be here tonight. Proper communication, maybe could have put this meeting off to when everybody could have been present. Proper communication, maybe could have put this meeting off to when everybody could have been present, all hands on deck and the public could have responded. Back to the public safety side of that. These are Lear jets that come in. I don't know, maybe I can produce the documents, give them to the planners so you can see what companies are using the airport. This is ab gas, this is jet fuel. It's not a Cessna that's flying into these glide scopes over the housing, the proposed housing area. If there was an accident, we have a great fire department in town, we have a great police department. This is going to tax us. It's going to, emergency services will be beyond utilized and there'll be mutual aid from all over. You had the medical flight that went down in the city just outside of Philadelphia that went straight into the ground. That didn't come in on a glide scope, trying to make a runway. So, went into the ground, imploded and it affected probably six or seven city blocks, different buildings. There was a loss of lives, not just in the plane, but on the ground as well. So, if you can keep that in mind. I know somebody spoke before about an airplane coming down in the woods behind this tree line of his property. The continuation that he's asking, I implore that the solicitor and any other solicitor team within the town holds them to a tight timeframe. They can ask for continuances, but how many continuances to get his experts here? If one's needed, okay, give them the benefit of the doubt. You start giving two, three, four, what's the purpose at that point? Get the materials here, get the people here, have a proper meeting and then you people can do your job and make the decision. And I implore you to continue to use the peer review. I get one week's time is not enough, but there's probably a lot of data as common sense has dictated in here from the neighbors that lived there about the traffic on that road. Not to tax the police department, but we can all start filing opa requests to see what type of accidents are over there, what the traffic status is, if there's been any traffic studies. We'll let peer review do that and see what they come up with traffic information. And thank you for letting me speak tonight.
Nancy Lancaster, L A N C A S T E R, 22, Laurie Ellen Drive. My comments-
Can I swear you in?
Oh, yep, forgot.
You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do. My comments are directed to the audience. Please don't get discouraged.
Miss, miss, you gotta direct.
Okay, audience, please don't get discouraged. How's that, if I do it that way? We have spent so much time and discussion. You see how many people are here? We love this town. We just want to be heard. I understand there's political ramifications for this, but I don't want you to give up. We can do this, so hang in there, right? That's it.
The chairman, I haven't been at the last meeting.
Can, can you give your, give your name, your address, and then I'm going to swear you in?
Gabriel V. Pat, live on 493 Douglas Pike on the corner of Maureen Drive.
You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do, sir.
Go ahead, sir.
I got three questions. Number one, we know schools are going to be too small. I don't know if there's going to be children in this development or what. Lime, Lime Rock School is going to be way too small. So, that means we've got to build more, another school that we don't want. Number two, I live on the corner of Maureen Drive and Douglas Pike. My driveway is on Maureen Drive. The traffic there is unbelievable. Now, Lime Rock Road is a state road. If you drive that road, when you're getting near the farmer where it, uh, it used to be, that road is very narrow. You're going to go in the ditch. The road is not capable of having any more vehicles than what it is right now. Number two, three, along Maureen Drive and Douglas Pike, all the traffic's going to cut through because that intersection of Lime Rock Road and Douglas, Douglas Pike is going to be jammed. They're going to cut through. Are they going to put a, a light there? There's a lot of things to think about, watershed. The road is way too small to handle the traffic that they want to put in that development. And another question. Maybe you consider like North Providence did, the mayor of North Providence. We had land in North Providence. They bought it because they don't want an envelope to buy it, to build houses for schools to be too small. And they had, it's open land. That would be the thing to do. So, like I said, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
And have a nice holiday.
You too. Anyone else like to be heard this evening?
Hi, I'm Ross McCurdy. I live at 10 Meadowview Drive in Smithfield, of course.
Can I swear you in? You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Go ahead, sir.
M C C U R D Y, Ross, R O S S. You're welcome. Some of what I've got to say, you've probably already heard before, but I want to say from the start, I'm opposed to any high density development. It's completely out of character with the town. And this really affects the town's quality of life. With high density come high density problems. Other people brought up the school issues. This is going to put more demands on the services, especially the schools. And our schools are already fairly full here. So, sometimes you think, hey, great, we're taking in more tax money, but then we end up spending more money on public services and it can be a losing game. Let's see. One of the other things I want to point out, that I've seen this before, also in the Harris Road Lime Rock area, going back a few years ago, there was the same kind of hearings where the area was zoned for five buildings, five houses. They managed to stuff in 45 houses there. So, this is something that I've seen before. And also, it's interesting to point out that at one of the meetings that I went to and spoke there, that it was full of people like this tonight and the developer delayed it. Then they delayed it again, and I think they delayed it again. And it seems to be a bit of a tactic where these things get delayed until people stop showing up and then they get things pushed through. The big question we have to ask ourselves, is this going to make Smithfield a better town? Or is it in the interest of financials, which might be in our, not in our interest, when we weigh everything that we need to consider? Something else I want to bring up too, had a gentleman bring up about the airport. I'm a pilot, I fly out of North Central State Airport. These are going to be built right in the flight path of the main runway, which is runway five and also runway two, three departing from there. The last thing we need in the area of the airport is high density development. That's absolutely the last thing we want. We already have problems sometimes. You've got an airport that's about 70 years old. People move into the airport and then they complain about airplane noise. But the airport's been there a long time and it really serves the community in many ways. So, that's a huge factor to take into consideration. I'm not what you'd call an aviation expert, but I actively fly out of North Central. I've been flying out of there for about 20 years and I'm a commercially rated instrument pilot. So, I think that gives me a little bit of credibility in that. I also want to point out that seeing the huge signs along the road in this area, it reminds me very much of what I saw in Barrowville and Gloucester. And you remember this, where their proposed power plant was talking about using up huge amount of acres. It was going to take water, trucks were going to be coming in. This was a bunch of people, regular citizens with lawn signs that took on a billion dollar project. That was literally a billion dollar project. And I was really glad to see that that project did not go through. The people with the lawn signs won and it really helped the quality of life in Rhode Island and in Barrowville. And I hope that everyone here makes the right decision to serve the town, not in the short term, not in the medium term, but in the short, medium, and the long term. This is a huge decision. Once these things get built, they're not coming down and we're going to have to deal with the ramifications. Thank you very much. And I hope the people with the lawn signs win this one too.
Jeffrey Gross, Town of Gloucester.
What's your address, sir, please?
24 Money Hill Road.
You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
Do you have a Bible?
I don't have a Bible, I'm asking you a question.
Yes, sir.
Go ahead.
Gross, G R O S S. Okay, friend of mine can't make it tonight, Dan Kessler. He brought up a valid point. Where are all the people that are going to occupy these residents come from? Something to think about. Worse yet, I was before the town, uh, Smithfield Town Council and I brought up this thought. Welcome to the city of Smithfield. I don't, that didn't resonate well, nor does it the city of Rhode Island. That is where the Democrats in the State House are looking to put us. And worse yet, I won't harp on all the side street comments and the like, but I came off of Route 295 last night, headed 44 west. It took me to go, uh, five minutes to go from the exit ramp to Home Depot because of the traffic. With all these new added buildings, that situation's going to get worse. And like everything, solar panels, windmills and their developers are no different than the developers that are constructing these housing projects. They are only out for the profit. We're stuck or you're stuck with the residual. And it brings to mind a comment that came out at the State House years ago. What's next, pave the bay? Where will the development stop? Where will it end? Because I can guarantee you, they put this through, there's more coming. And that's why folks from the Town of Gloucester are watching you, folks, and we have your back. And for the good people, and for the good people seated behind me and standing. If they're constantly putting these meetings off, this building needs to be packed next time. Thank you.
Thank you.
I hope I have standing. I don't live in Smithfield, but I do travel quite a bit through Smithfield and I do use the airport as I am a pilot, as Ross McCurdy before me, as spoken. Do you want me to swear to tell the truth? I just hope all you make the same allegiance to tell the truth, all of you, including the developers.
So, we got to begin this way?
Yes.
You got to state your name and address, please.
Brian Couch, K A U C H, 189 Joe Searle Road, Chapachet.
You swear to tell the truth?
I swear to tell the truth.
And the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Very good.
As long as, as long as all of you do the same, okay? It's a reciprocal agreement here, isn't it?
Just asking a question, sir.
Regarding the planning, you're head of the planning board, right, Mr. Yamber? Okay. I would, I would hope that you, being, being in the planning business, that you would have a plan for your next meeting, or at least have a vote for it coming up this meeting. Parliamentary procedure would dictate that. I hope that's consistent. I'm also a pilot. I use North Central Airport. Runway 33 is closest to this development, which is a smaller strip. 23 is the main runway there. But as said before, this is a safety issue. That high density development there is inconsistent with safety. And I think the FAA would probably have, you can chime in on that. I don't, not that I'm big on the FAA or a lot of regulation, but the quality of life in this town of Smithfield is, you're, I think you're overtaxing this town with too many, many units, too many people. The poor, the poor high schools, overburdened, that I could see. And I think your, your roads certainly need to be, they're already clogged up as it is. So, as far as you're, you're in the planning business and on a planning board, you need to do better planning, if I can say that. All right, so. Any, you have a question of me?
No, you're, so you're, I'm going to use this to comment.
But hopefully by the end of this meeting, you're going to tell this group, this here assembled, that you have a plan for the next meeting and not keep dragging people over back and forth and back and forth, so that they'll dwindle down to nothing, so that the developer can push through what they want. Let's, let's make sure we have a plan for the next meeting, is that all right? Could I ask that of you?
We're not answering questions, sir. We're going to run the meeting how, how we always run the meeting. We're trying to do the best. We're giving the public an opportunity to speak, given it was a request for a continuance.
So, there isn't going to be a vote regarding this development tonight?
No, there's going to be a vote today on the request for a continuance, given all the members of the public weren't aware of the request for the continuance. We wanted to give everybody who came an opportunity to speak, so they did not waste their time and the board could appreciate their comments.
Very well.
Mr. Chairman? May I ask him one simple question? I think he can answer with like one word.
Sure.
You stated, stated that you were a pilot.
I am.
How long have you been flying out of North Central?
25 years.
Thank you very much.
Hi, my name is Luigi Solda, S O L D A. My first name is L U I G I A. I live at 3 Laurie Ellen Drive. I've spoken before.
Can I swear you in? I know you spoke before. You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Go ahead.
So, I want to point out a couple of things. The lawyer said that his expert witness was in Europe. I go to Europe a lot. I plan my vacations months ahead of time. I think it's disingenuous for him to say three days before this meeting, oh, my guy is out of town. His guy knew he was going to be out of town more than likely before we set this meeting. I take offense to that. I think we're being, being boozled on that. And I think it's disrespectful to you and it's disrespectful to the town for them to do that. Secondly, I also noticed that the developers and the builders are not here, only their lawyer. You are all here. The town is all here. That even though we know that this meeting was going to be continued, I didn't see one person leave because this is important to us. This is incredibly important to us. It's incredibly important to the town that we maintain it, our town. But the developers chose to not even show up. That sends us all a message that we do not matter to them. And I hope that the board takes that into consideration. They are not here. The least that they could have done, if their experts couldn't be here, the least they could have done was come here and be here just the way we all are here. And I just think that is so disrespectful to the Town of Smithfield, the planning board, the citizens of Smithfield. And I want you all to take that into consideration. And I can tell you, I will be here, no matter how many times this gets continued, I will be- And I can tell you, I will be here, no matter how many times this gets continued, I will be here. And I know everyone else in here will also be here, because this is important to us, and we will do everything we can to make sure that you all listen to us and that we have a voice. Thank you.
Thank you.
I've already spoken once, but I'd like to emphasize a point that was not brought up at the last meeting. Do you want me swearing again?
No, you're, you're, you're taking aim.
Okay. I want to, pardon? Peter Parsigian? I just wanna, I wanna emphasize that the last meeting did not include a traffic study, and it was a, you know, a subject that's critical. I think, I've heard a lot about, it seems like every speaker mentioned it, at least in part, a traffic study seemed to be very important to the, the crowd behind me. And I didn't, there was no traffic study during the, the previous meeting. So I'm, I'm hoping that you emphasize to the people that are trying to get this through, that a traffic study is absolutely mandatory, so that we know what's going on. I mean, I think that once they do that, and once the, the town is aware of the congestion that will follow, that'll have an effect on all of you members. Thank you.
Sir, there was a traffic expert that they put forth and, and did testify. History of what happened was, the town at that point requested a peer review of that, and the town's peer review engineer just completed their report, leading up days before today's hearing. They have an opportunity to review, digest, comment, et cetera, the applicant. That's, that's the history of where we are today.
Right, but at the last meeting, there was no in-depth discussion of a traffic?
There was.
There was?
Yes.
I don't remember that. I, it seemed like if, if we had any discussion, it was glossed over.
There were a lot of issues, so perhaps you forgot.
Okay. But I think that that's, that, that seems to be like at least fifty percent of the problem.
Thank you. Anyone else from the member of the public that would like to be heard?
Kevin Bluthlett, Lime Rock Road.
Your, your, your address, sir?
One-twenty-two Lime Rock Road.
Swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
So help me God.
Go ahead.
I just, I have a, I guess it's more of a question, I know you can't answer questions, but is there anywhere this, that this board can say, at the next meeting, we're gonna make a decision, whether they're ready, they're not, we all show up, you all show up, we're gonna make a decision. I think you have the backs of everyone here, if they wanna take us to court. I think everybody in this room would back you. It's a matter of you guys having the guts to stand up and say, we're gonna make a decision at the next meeting, no if, ands, or buts, whether you're ready, you're not ready, who shows up, who doesn't show up. We're making a decision. I don't know if that's possible, but we'd like to see that happen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, John Braggett, one forty-six Water Road. I was a little taken aback by a, what one of the speakers raised a question that implied, questioned your integrity. Would you like to say that I've been impressed throughout these meetings with the way that this board has conducted the hearing, and particularly you, Mr. Chairman, as to a very good job that you've done?
Thank you. Anyone else from the public that would like to be heard this evening? I see you.
Check, check. Nicholas De Senzo, one Kane Road.
Swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Go ahead, sir.
Just a quick idea, very quick. I was thinking, the town is twenty thousand people. If we all, if we did just half of that, ten thousand people, giving a hundred dollars to purchase the property, that'd be a million dollars. So that's kinda like a third option, just passed my mind, then discussed it with people before. And I don't think it's, I know it sounds far-fetched, but just wanted to say that.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Good evening, Rudy Brito from one-six-nine Lime Rock.
Swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
Go ahead, sir.
I do. Brito, B-R-I-T-O. I just wanna go on record to let the board know that if you do go to court, I'm willing to support you. So I think you got a lot of people in this town who don't want this project, and I just wanna make sure you guys know that we got your backing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any, anyone else from the public?
Susan Sikensky, Ridge Road, Smithfield.
What address?
Seventy-five.
Okay. You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
Yes.
You, you might wanna pull the microphone down a little bit, that might help.
All I wanna say is, S-U-P-I-N-S-K-I. I just wanted to say that I'm against this large development, and I don't think that's the right place for it on that road. I just came down it tonight, because I took the wrong exit, and I ended up, you know, I was like, all these beautiful woods, a deer crossed in front of me, and I'm like, this is all gonna end. And I just don't, you know, I'm against it, and I just wanted to say that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
George Dionisopoulos, sixty-six Clark Road, Smithfield, Rhode Island. Okay, we talk about traffic.
Can I swear you in first?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth?
I most certainly do.
Thank you.
We talk about traffic studies. Okay, let's start off on Route seven, the coffee shop. They did a traffic study, and they said there's gonna be in the High Peak, there was gonna be seventy-five vehicles going in and out of that in High Peak. I think there's more than seventy-five vehicles that are going in and out of there at High Peak. Okay, let's go back where I live. I moved to Smithfield, I lived in Pawtucket. When I come in, I'm first generation in this country, and I lived to the country, moved to the country. It was a dirt road. It was nice. I raised my kids, they camped in the woods, they enjoyed it. Now, we have cul-de-sac after cul-de-sac after cul-de-sac. They did a traffic study. And let me tell you something, I was raking leaves last weekend, and the amount of vehicles that went up and down that road within a fifteen-minute period of time, I don't think that traffic study was accurate. Can we anyway do another traffic study to see if these vehicles, what they proposed, what they were gonna be, and what they are now?
Well, the town had retained an engineer to peer review or look at the numbers of the applicant's experts, and that's what's kinda the reason for the continuance. So they issued a report and comment.
Right, but I'm just saying, I mean, I just sat there, it was just a matter of fifteen minutes, and it had to be forty-five vehicles, and I'm not exaggerating, not by, by no stretch of the imagination at all. And not only not doing the speed, there's no speed limits posted on them roads to say that they're twenty-five miles an hour. So it's a free-for, it's like the autobahn. Seriously, go up Clark Road right now, and let me know if you see a speed limit sign. There are none. Thank you.
Thank you. I was just advised by the town planner that the various traffic reports will be online for the public prior to the next hearing. When are they gonna be online? Next week? By early next week, so it'll be a copy of the applicant's traffic report, as well as the peer review material by Crossman Engineering for the public. Any, anyone else from the public that would like to be heard tonight? With no one responding, we're going to close the public hearing for this evening. What's that? Did someone raise their hand? But please come forward. I didn't see you.
Would that be hard? I need to do this. Here I see chaos of it.
And if you need a moment to, to compose, take a moment.
It's not gonna help, because when I get back, I get on this trip. I live at twenty-two Harris Road.
Can I swear you in?
Yes.
Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
Again, twenty-two Harris Road. I'll be sixteen in February. I've lived there since I was two and a half years old. I can't go to my mailbox. I can't get out of my street to go to work. I re, like, rescheduled my whole life in order to get to work on time. The speed limit at Douglas, I know it's a state road, it's ridiculous. Like I said, I can't even go to my mailbox, I have to schedule time, I can't. I'm gonna get hit by a car. We don't need this development. And I'm trying to survive, and I wanna stay in this town, so please, please, do not let this development go through. And I'm also asking you to please forget the traffic study, try to get out of Route, onto Route seven from Harris Road. Ridiculous. I live on the short version between Douglas and Lime Rock. I'm about ready, let's say, I don't wanna be here anymore. It's ridiculous. It's too much development, and here's the big concrete house. That's why I stay. Just please take this into consideration, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Rhonda Kessler, K-E-S-S-L-E-R, R-H-O-N-D-A. I live at ninety-nine Lime Rock Road.
Can I swear you in?
Yes.
You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do. I do. It's tough for me to get up here, I'm real nervous, but I see everything firsthand from where I live. I live at ninety-nine Lime Rock Road, I see everything, I see the traffic, I see the speeding cars. So Lime Rock Road used to be a stop sign at each end. Now it's a traffic light at each end. Personally, I think the traffic lights made it worse, because now cars get backed up from a traffic light. When I leave my house in the morning, seven-thirty in the morning, I'm, I'm ten to fifteen cars back from Douglas bike, and it takes two changes of the light to get through the light. Traffic is horrible. You had mentioned a traffic study by, by the developers, and somebody on our side looked at that traffic study, and why are we looking at somebody else's traffic study in deciding if it's good or not? Or, I, I'm, I'm just not understanding that.
It's called a peer review.
Okay, and, and we don't, do we, does it have to do with us doing our own study? I mean, we're looking at somebody else's study and doing what? Saying whether it's legit or not?
Yes.
Okay, but it's not our own study?
It's not our own study.
Why don't we have our own study? I'm not being, I'm not being anything like that, but I'm just saying, we're looking at somebody else's study and deciding whether it's legit or not, but Lime Rock Road is horrific. I'm out in my yard in the summertime every single day doing yard work, and I see the loud cars, the speeding, it's unbelievable. Now, I was a Providence cop for thirty years, and I moved to Smithfield for peace and quiet, from Providence. I patrolled the streets of Providence, and I moved here for quiet living. My house is set back where I still somewhat have quiet living, but the traffic is unbelievable. Even, even the mopeds are loud. Flight path, my house is right over a flight path. I mean, the jets and the, the planes that are flying over my house are unbelievable. Every day, all day. What does this have to do with building the development? It has a lot to do with it, because it just makes things more congested. It seems these meetings that we've had, nobody's really talked about crime. I haven't heard anything about any type of, not a crime study, but what will this do to the police department and fire departments? The, you know, we're all gonna pay for it, we're gonna need more cops, we're gonna need more fire. I just, I'm, I wanna be on record also as saying that I am a hundred thousand billion percent against this project. I guess that's about all I have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman, I got a question. By being Route seven a state road, and Lime Rock Road is a state road, did the state ever do a, a traffic study?
Okay, I can't answer questions.
Well, I think they should. Because when they do it, I know how they do it. They have a car, and they, they're there for eight, nine, ten hours. They, they, I think you'll get an accurate reading like that.
Thank you.
That's all I can say. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Hi, Frank Ritchie, fourteen Karen Anne Drive. I am a-
Can I swear you in, sir?
Oh, yes, go ahead.
Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Go ahead.
I am a student pilot, and I fly out of that airport very regularly. We have rules in place when we're pilots, and they're there for a reason. There is a reason why we have areas where we're not supposed to fly and where houses are not supposed to be built, because things happen. Last week alone, we had a little Piper that landed on I-95, not in this area, but he had to land somewhere because he ran out of fuel, and he crashed. We also had the UPS incident that happened. We don't have anything that large, but you know, we do have jets that are coming in. The area is there for a reason, like my book with all of its rules is an inch thick that we have to follow. We can't cut corners. We cut corners, we put ourselves and everyone else in jeopardy. Thank you.
Hello?
Karen Kennedy Curreton, six Orchard Meadows Drive, Smithfield. I just have a little-
Can I swear you in?
Oh, yes.
You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
Absolutely.
Go ahead.
T-U-R-E-T-O-N. Just a little addendum, everyone's talking about cars. Just a little addendum, everyone's talking about cars on Lime Rock. We have trucks on Lime Rock. We have big trucks on Lime Rock. I think the industries that are on that road, Jenks Hill Road, they use Lime Rock as a way through. Also tonight, I was coming out of Orchard Meadows. It took me a good five, six minutes to get out of Orchard Meadows because there was a line all the way up Lime Rock. And it took me two traffic lights to be able to make the right turn. So it's an issue.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? What an entrance.
I know, I didn't even touch it. Lorena Nardi, L-O-R-R-E-N-A, Nardi, N-A-R-D-I, 6 Caronian Drive.
Swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay, go ahead.
I just have a couple of, I guess, questions or comments. As far as the traffic study is concerned, did they just do a traffic study for Lime Rock only? Was it done on Douglas, Caronian, Marine Drive, Clock Road? That our neighborhood that will be greatly, greatly impacted?
Primarily Lime Rock, but a full copy will be available for you to review.
Yeah, I look forward to reading that because the plat, the big plat, the Caronian, Marine Drive plat, we will be greatly, we already are impacted a lot. Where my house is coming around the bend right before you get to Lime Rock, people have driven straight up on my lawn many times. We've had to repair our property, repair our lawn because of it multiple times. They just come down around that bend. And I do foresee, I'm echoing what others have said tonight, people will use our neighborhood as a cut through. They will be coming up Lime Rock, down Caronian, crossing Clock Road. They will be doing that, to avoid that light. They want to go to Lincoln Mall, we will be a huge cut through. And then I just have another comment. Have we had anyone from the, any other departments in the town weigh in on this? Anyone from the emergency management? Anyone from the school department on the potential impact? Have there been any statements made by any other departments in the town? I'd be interested in hearing those reports too, or those comments.
There was a technical review report that has multi-agencies involved.
Okay. That's available?
Yes.
For, okay. I'd be interested in reading that too. It'd be nice if someone from the town, from the school department could come to a meeting, someone from emergency management, because there's been a lot of talk about the concern for the numbers in the schools, fire and rescue, police. It'd be nice to have someone represented on that front also. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else this evening? Not seeing anyone respond, but we're going to close the public hearing aspect for the purposes of this evening. It's open, of course, with respect to the overall hearing. Any discussion on the motion to continue tonight's hearing that was initially began? Go ahead.
I agree that it should be at the soonest date. Like, it shouldn't go to February, I think January would be appropriate to move this on.
So just, so the members are clear. The February 19th date is the date that the applicant is willing to extend the deadline for this board to make a decision. He wasn't asking for that to be the date. So, and so the public is clear. There's two dates, there's hearing dates and under the law in Rhode Island, this board is charged with making the decision by a certain timeframe from when the application was submitted and certified complete. But because there's ongoing hearings, applicants customarily and boards customarily continue those hearings for further evidence. But in doing so, those deadlines to make those decisions are continued. The applicant's request through their counsel tonight was simply to say, instead of making it the deadline to decide 30 days after whenever the hearing is, if it is January 7th, that'd be February 7th. He said, just make it to your regularly scheduled meeting. So hopefully, if it had to be done that night at a regularly scheduled meeting, we're not worried about getting a second auditorium or trying to worry about scrambling for more logistics. This is a large logistic endeavor for your town's planning department and for this board. So we're trying to, they're all trying to balance all those things.
Any other questions or comments or discussion of the board?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, is, my understanding is the January 7th meeting that we've been discussing continuing this application to would take place in this auditorium?
I'm told that this auditorium is available on January 7th. The applicant is available. And the board members just recently learned of that date and are responding if they're available.
Now, this regular meeting of the planning board, the deadline decision date for February 19th, would that take place in this auditorium?
Perhaps January 7th, we have all the evidence and we can rule in the decisions that day. It's an outlier if...
If we have to.
If we have to.
Okay, understood. Thank you.
Any other discussion of the board? Do we have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we continue this application to January 7th, 2026, and that it take place in this auditorium at 6:00 PM.
With the clock continuing?
With the clock frozen.
To the February 19th hearing date?
To the February 19th date. And I concur with that, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All not in favor? Okay, the ayes have it. Who's second? It was Al. Okay, so in terms of wrapping up tonight's meeting, do we have a motion?
Move to adjourn.
We have a second. All in favor? Aye. All not in favor?